So let's go ahead and all make sure my phone is. Call to order the city employee pension fund board special meeting. October thirty first, twenty twenty three, and we do have a quorum. And so the first item of business is to approve the August seventeenth minutes. Thank you, Councilmember Sevigney and Councilmember Baxter. Are there any corrections, additions, questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. And let's see, page four and what for? We'll start with four. Our financial fourth quarter expenses. Are there any questions? It is, I will just make an observation on the annuities, how they are showing us what's happening. They're going down. We talked last time about, you know, our beneficiaries and that sort of thing. So if there are no questions, we'll go ahead. That's just for information.
Just a quick question. Well, the bank can finance these, basically the broker fee. Is that what that is? Thank you.
The majority. Because when you look at it, if you think it's only bank fees, it's like, oh, God.
We've got a really crappy bank.
Okay, anything else on that? All right. If I could have a motion to approve the ratification of transfer and then we'll discuss.
Send move.
Thank you, Councilmember Sevigney. Parisian. All right, Councilmember Baxter. And are there any questions for Commissioner Hensley? Anything at all? It's pretty cut dry, isn't it? All right, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. And now we'll move on. You got a found copy of the investment review. And so we will just turn this right over to you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here alone today.
You are, no backup.
David couldn't join me, so.
Okay.
But I'll try to do my best.
Yes.
Exciting times in the markets. You know, of course, it's a very uncertain time. There's a lot of speak about the recession. Big banks have all kind of kept pushing back the recession call. First, it was in twenty twenty three, it's going to be early twenty twenty four. And now a lot of, a lot of the large banks have sort of pulled back on the recession call and said, we may not have a recession, a soft landing. So we've been kind of teetering back and forth. And of course, with high inflation, it's a very difficult investment environment for pension funds and for all investors. So I'll try to do a quick recap of the markets, kind of where we are, highlight the performance. And I'll jump right into page four, which the first section provides a summary. So it kind of captures probably a lot of the key information. Page four, you can see on the top, there's essentially two portfolios. The liability-defusing portfolio, the one sort of the lower line, that's really the important one. That's where we basically take the old pension liability and defuse it into relatively less risky, or I wouldn't say safe, nothing is safe, but relatively safer fixed income securities. And they're staggered out, they're laddered out to match the expected lifetime of the plan. So as pension fund payments, benefit, beneficial payments are required, funds will mature at par value, so you don't lose any value. And the proceeds are used to pay off the benefits. And so that portfolio has been working really well. We've completely sort of taken the risk out for that liability so that we ensure that there will be money to pay the beneficiaries. The pension plan, as you all know, is in a really good position. It's one of the rare plans around the country that's actually overfunded. And so the surplus is invested in a return-seeking portfolio, which is that line on top. That one has grown over time because it's invested in a lot more risky. I would say kind of more, more in line with typical pension plans. Sixty forty, sixty percent stocks, forty percent bond portfolio. So that one bears a lot more risk than the liability-defusing portfolio. So the two together are about thirty, thirty-one million, thirty-one million, four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars roughly to end June thirtieth. And you can see the allocation of the return-seeking portfolio on the lower right there. It's again sixty percent stocks, forty percent fixed income roughly. And then over that pie chart, over to the left of that, shows you the overall allocation. So it's roughly, when you think of the liability-defusing, it would be about a fifty fifty portfolio of portfolios. On page five, just to keep track of the funded status, the funded ratio is, you know, at five hundred percent roughly. And that should change every year as the liabilities change and as the assets change. Page six is a snapshot of the more recent performance. The return-seeking portfolio returned roughly seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in terms of return on investment for the second quarter, slightly trading the benchmark. We're behind the benchmark by forty-five basis points. And I'll explain the rationale or the reasoning behind that. It was mostly driven by the portfolio being slightly overweight to small companies, to small cap stocks. And the market was really driven by seven large big tech companies that you hear about, the magnificent seven, if you will. So the index was heavily weighted in those seven stocks, which had an exceptional rebound. And we were overweight small caps. Now, I'll kind of show how the performance of the market was overall in a few pages. But that kind of summarizes the quarter for the year. For the last twelve months, the performance has captured eight point oh five percent return for the portfolio versus a benchmark return of nine point seven three percent. The liability-defusing portfolio, of course, you capture the change in market value. But again, those bonds, as they mature, you get par value. And the liabilities are cash matched against those bond prices. So the total return combined portfolio is about five point eight percent for the last twelve months. That's just a quick summary of the returns. I'll do a quick market update, just kind of maybe a five or ten minute overview. Lots going on in the economy. As I said, are we in a recession? Are we going into a recession? That's kind of been the theme. Inflation is high, it's coming down, but is it coming down quick enough with the Fed? The Fed has a target of two percent. It's going to be very hard to get to two percent. So the consensus view is there's likely to be maybe one more rate hike this year. The Fed has articulated last week that they're going to continue to raise rates if inflation doesn't come down. And, and so that's why consensus view is now higher for longer. We may be towards the end of the rate hike cycle. I mean, another twenty-five basis point rate hike is in the cards potentially. And then the Fed is likely to pause. And they've indicated that they would likely cut rates sometime in twenty twenty four. So we're maybe about, I don't know, maybe in middle, at least as early as the middle of twenty twenty four is the soonest that they might cut rates. The market is sort of anticipating a rate cut. The Fed has articulated, we may not really cut anytime soon. But, you know, definitely, if the, if the economy tips into inflation, into recession, the Fed would potentially consider a rate cut. So we're not really there yet. In terms of the recession call, there is really, it's going to be very difficult to see a recession in the traditional sense, even though all economic indicators are sort of pointing to a very, very high probability of recession. We may not see a traditional recession in the sense that you have two consecutive quarters of GDP declining. And then you have high unemployment. The high unemployment part is the part that we don't really see. The job market continues to be very strong. Unemployment is at three and a half percent. It's really not expected to rise significantly. I don't see it maybe going above five percent in the worst case scenario, the way things look today. Because of that, the National Bureau of Economic Research, which is the entity that calls a recession, may not call a recession, even if we do see two consecutive quarters of GDP decline. So it's going to be very tough to see a traditional recession because of that. GDP has actually been coming in healthier than expected. The economy is growing, although at a moderate rate, it's, it's still not in that negative territory. Now, you could argue that when the Federal Reserve raises rates, it typically takes at least eighteen months to twenty-four months before you see the real economy impacted. We, we're not even at the eighteen month mark yet. So there's an argument to be made that, hey, we haven't seen all of the pain yet. There's still more pain to come. And that's, that's a legitimate argument. Regional banks are hurting. They're paying, you know, they're having to pay higher rates on their deposits, but they're stuck with loans on their books that are paying very, very low interest rates based on the, you know, when they were, when those loans were fulfilled. So regional banks are under pressure. I would argue that even though we're not going to see a traditional recession, we're already going through something called a rolling recession. We've seen industries rolling in and out of recession already. We saw high tech in twenty twenty-two. We saw the housing market in a recession. Commercial real estate is in a clear recession. And, you know, we saw manufacturing in a recession. So, you know, regional banks are under stress. So you can see segments of the economy sort of rolling in and out of recession. But on a macro level, we may not see that true recession, but we're seeing it industry by industry. And that's how we're going to play this out. So we haven't left the soft landing camp. We've been in that camp since the beginning, and I, and I think that's sort of where we're, where we're going to stay. Inflation, you can see on page ten, is coming down. But it doesn't come down as quickly as it goes up. And so it's going to be a while before it gets to the Fed's two percent target. But the good news is it is coming down. You know, we're seeing commodity prices, you know, they were down a few months ago. Now they're beginning, you see gas prices started to go back up. So, you know, commodities, commodities may make pressure on that. But overall, a big portion of that number is still tied to housing or rents. The Fed doesn't have a direct measure for, for real estate inflation. They use an indirect measure, which is lagging, and it's lagging by a lot. So we're still seeing inflation in, in rents, for example, in the numbers. Yet, the real economy is showing us that rents have actually come down. So there's a lag effect in those numbers. And so the Fed's going to have to wait and see. They've raised rates. I think now they're going to have to slow down and kind of wait and see, is it working? And it's going to hopefully show that it is working, but it's going to work slowly. And we need to kind of be patient with that. And with that, you know, kind of, I talked about unemployment being resilient. So, you know, I just want to point to, let's see, page sixteen real quick, just kind of to see a snapshot of how did the different capital markets do. We'll look at some sort of popular gauges, the S and P five hundred. For the year, quarter date is up almost nine percent. For the year, almost twenty percent. This is as of June thirtieth. It has continued to go up in July. August has been kind of, you know, not so great.
Not the best.
And, and that's typical. You know, typically, you know, on the back of a strong July, we've had five consecutive months of S and P rising ending July thirty-first. And so August through October traditionally had been weak months in the stock market. September tends to be, on average, the most negative month. So, you know, we did expect a little bit of a pullback, August, September. October may not be too exciting. But also looking at the S and P five hundred and why it's such a huge number in comparison to Russell two thousand. Russell two thousand is a small cap. Now, small companies are actually better valued in America. Small companies have a much more attractive valuation. Large companies are a little bit more overvalued. And seven companies have sort of exacerbated them. And that, that twenty percent return for the year is mostly driven by seven companies. Apple, Microsoft, Nvidia, heard about Nvidia with AI in the news a lot. So Google, Tesla. So there are seven companies that have really driven seventy-five percent of that total market return. And small companies haven't captured that. When the SVB Bank failure took place, and First Republic and other banks began to fail, we entered the year with an overweight small cap based on valuation. And we still lack that valuation. But when, when SVB Bank failed, that was something very hard to predict. I don't think anybody would have predicted that. Yes, the bank was overly concentrated in high tech. And maybe the Fed didn't do the best job of sort of catching that and sort of calling them out on it. But essentially, we could have averted the failure. At a venture capital fund manager essentially went to his investors, and it was a good number of them. And they were all invested their cash with SVB Bank and basically asked them to take their money out of SVB Bank because he wasn't comfortable with SVB Bank. That caused they run on the bank. Now, when something like that happens, even with J P Morgan, the largest bank in the country, if, if someone came and said, listen, all, all depositors, go and take your money out of J P, J P Morgan, it will collapse. Even if it's the most stable bank on the planet, it will collapse because banks don't hold all their, all their deposits in cash. They lend most of it out, and it's tied up in investments and loans. And so SVB was no different. But because you had that situation happen, it created a run-up, a classic run on the money. And so nobody would have expected that. That hurt small companies. Tighter lending as a result of the SVB Bank failure is going to hurt small companies. And so what we've done is taken, listen, we're going to take out the overweight in, in the small cap, write out the rest of the year until things stabilize a little bit. And then maybe we'll get back in small. But that's essentially kind of what's happened in the market and why large cap is so driven by those seven tech names where a small cap underperformed. You look at international and the sort of the rows behind, underneath that. International was slightly behind domestic. And then fixed income, measured by the Bloomberg aggregate, was slightly negative for a day. Sort of flat, slightly negative for the, for the last twelve months. And that's really mostly because of the tighter, sort of the tightening by the Fed, raising interest rates at a very quick, you know, very quick pace over the last year or so. And that really kind of covers, covers it. I'll jump straight to the performance page on tab three to kind of show the more sort of detailed returns of the return-seeking portfolio. Again, this is the higher-risk portfolio. On page twenty-eight, you see the portfolio ended the quarter, June thirtieth quarter with twenty-five million dollars in value. For the quarter, it was up three point oh three percent, lagging the benchmark. Again, because of that overweight to small cap in the beginning of the year. And of course, it's hurting us going back twelve months as well. So that's, the, the, the main driver of the underperformance has been that small cap overweight. I did look at the data as of last night. August, we outperformed, so we brought back a little bit in August. And so far, yeah, so August, we should finish the, the month with a, with a slight outperformance. So we're trying to catch up. July was also positive. I think July, we were catching up as well. Going back since inception, the portfolio is still ahead of its benchmark. Seven, six point two seven percent annualized rate of return versus a benchmark return of six point oh one. So, you know, considering we've been in a COVID.
Yes, sir. What did? It, it appears from looking at the overall stretch here that, and I, and I know COVID is an issue. But it does appear that your numbers must be much stronger in the beginning part of your agreement with us from two thousand fifteen to, let's say, two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And then you've kind of consistently kind of not done great against the benchmark. I mean, it is a pretty diversified benchmark. What changed for you guys? Did something change? Did you have a manager change? Did you, what, what might have triggered that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a really, that's a really good question. And you're right. I think if you go back, our trading performance was stronger earlier on.
It must be because if you're, if you beat it since inception, since two fifteen, and then basically in the last three years, you, you, or actually, the last two years, you missed it so much.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
No, that's a good question. There's a couple of drivers of that. And they're all relatively recent in the last year. They're all, it all happened in the last twelve months. Two things happened. We had an underperforming international manager, which we made quick changes to replace. And then we had the small cap call. So, you know, we'll own our mistakes when we, when we have. But part of the value we try to add is, is through the asset allocation. So when we see an asset class that's attractive, we'll slightly overweight. We won't do it by a lot. We'll, we'll slightly overweight. You see an asset class that we think is expensive, let's say, you know, fixed income. So for example, we made a lot of great calls. We had, we added commodities in twenty twenty-two. It's the only positive return for investment. That added portfolio, we were outperforming in twenty twenty-two. Since twenty twenty-two, we've had the, I think, the SVB failure.
It doesn't look like you outperformed in twenty twenty-two by looking at the, if I'm looking at the numbers. But maybe I.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're right. Actually, I think the outperformance was towards the end of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
But yeah, I think, to correct myself, let's go to page thirty. Page thirty is a calendar year of returns. So you can see in twenty twenty-two, we did lag the benchmark. It was twenty twenty-one where it was a heavy outperformance. Twenty twenty-two, I think it was towards the end of the year we started to.
Okay.
And then twenty twenty was a outperformance. Twenty nineteen was sort of flat, slightly better, slightly better. Twenty eighteen, just sort of flat. So really, the strongest years were, you know, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Again, the, the, the rate hikes, the rate hikes did impact how we were, kind of some of our managers. We had an international manager that was heavy in tech. At one point, they're underweight at the wrong time. So we lost confidence in that manager and we replaced them. And then the small cap call this year. So on the balance, yes, we're struggling the last twelve months or so. But, you know, historically, we've gone through these periods and we've come out of them strong. You know, since inception, returns are good. Our client deposits overall with three, four years or longer are all outperforming their benchmarks. Hundred percent of our clients going out that long are outperforming the benchmarks. So you're right, shorter-term struggles, and again, explained by one manager and then the small cap call. But.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if I'm understanding, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, we did outperform our benchmark. It was last year, twenty-two, that was the issue. It's amazing to me.
And here today.
Yeah, but during COVID, we outperformed our benchmark.
What helped in COVID is we, we, when we saw things shutting down overseas and the, the situation was starting to spread out of China, we saw uncertainty rise. What is that going to mean to restaurants, businesses? People are starting to stay home. And that spelled risk and uncertainty. So we, we put some money in cash. We took some money out of the markets. We underweighted the markets and put some money in cash, and that helped us. And then valuations became extremely attractive all of a sudden. Very quickly, the market tanked, we were in cash. And then all of a sudden, we looked at valuations and said, okay, wait a minute. So valuations now are actually really, really good. It's overdone. So we went back towards neutral. It's hard to time the market, and that's not what we were trying to do. It was just, we were looking at valuations and we were looking at risk and trying to decide what's the best place to put our clients. And, and that worked out. The small cap didn't. But, but I think if you ask, why did you make a mistake with small cap? Were you taking excessive risk? Were you being, you know, pardon my French, but, you know, stupid? Or is your process breaking down? I think the process was working. Small cap is undervalued, and I'll stand by that today. Any, any 401K investor or long-term investor with under five years' time horizon, I'll say overweight small cap. I'd say that with a lot of confidence right now. But in this portfolio, we decided, let's take it out. Let's wait out this year. When the Fed is done, we're going to get back in small. So we'll make it up, I hope. But yeah, excellent question, and I appreciate you asking it, and it does deserve to be addressed. We look at page thirty-three. It's important to see, you know, are we in compliance with the pension boards' investment policy? And you can see right now, we're really neutral. There's really very, very little overweight or underweight. We're pretty much at the targets. And that kind of tells you where we see the markets. We're not willing to make a big bet. Right now, we want, we don't want to, we don't want to do that because there's still a lot of uncertainty. Regional banks are under stress. Commercial real estate is under stress. We may not have seen the full impact of the rate hikes. So there might be a little bit of pain to come. But the good news is corporate earnings are, you know, although we're expecting an earnings recession, they're down six percent year-over-year. That's not horrible. We were expecting worse. So corporate earnings are still strong, not declining at the pace that most investors expected. Unemployment is, is very low. Inflation is coming down slowly but coming down. GDP is still positive. When you compare us to other countries, we're actually, we're killing it. We're, we're in far better shape than Europe. Europe is, some countries are in recession. Russia is feeling the impact of the, of the sanctions fully right now. China is having a hard time, and they're too scared to engage in stimulus. Not that they don't, they don't want to, because they think it's not going to be effective, but it won't. China is not able to stimulate their economy. They haven't fully come out of the COVID recession. Unemployment is really, really high with the youth. That's, that's going to spell, you know, political disaster internally. There's a lot of question marks around China. And we're seeing that reflected in Chinese stock performance. And so we recently added since, since this report, international exposure, because we like international. It's better value. But we, we did it through a passive low-cost index fund that excludes China. So sort of an all-world ex-China. Because we think China is struggling a little bit, the economy, their labor market is, is, so not only the recession, but you have a declining population. GDP, economic, economic growth, it really happens with, through two key factors. Labor market growth and productivity growth. And so, you know, productivity might be helped by some of the AI stuff. But labor markets are shrinking in Western Europe and in China. And so that's not good for the Chinese economy. So in comparison, we're not in a bad place. Our economy is resilient. Our corporations are more nimble. And we're able to adjust much more quickly. So I think because of that, things are bad, but, and there's still a lot of cash on the sidelines. A lot of investors have cash, they're still holding cash. And that's why I don't think things are going to get horrible in the stock market. We could see a five percent here and there correction or a mini-correction. But because there's so much cash that's still on the sidelines, I'm not too pessimistic. I'm cautious, but not too pessimistic right now. So that's why we're sort of neutral. And I think that kind of, that's it for the, any questions on the return seeking? I'll wrap up with just one more page on page thirty-nine, just to kind of show the, the liability-defusing portfolio, which, you know, I think page thirty-eight and thirty-nine together, you can see on thirty-eight how we are doing actual draw schedule versus the projected draw schedule. And so, you know, there's certainly very, very low risk of running out of money from the liability-defusing portfolio to meet the benefit payments. And if anything, there's always, the return-seeking portfolio is there to supplement. So if we need to, we can always sell, raise cash from the return-seeking, move it to the liability-defusing, pay the benefit payment. So there's really, I mean, the fund, the fund is in a really good position. No risk whatsoever of running out of money. That's not the issue. The issue is having too much money. And I think the question is, when do we do it? And so it's a good problem to have.
We are a rarity.
I was just curious, you know, I think we all kind of see the liability-defusing portfolio as the safe money. And it's the one that's losing money. If you look at your trailing twelve months, I know it's the twelve months, and we just talked about twelve months and what it looks like longer than that. But is it just a matter of timing? Anecdotally, from all we're hearing, you know, the, the interest rates are better than they've ever been. And like, the, the safer money, the more fixed income seems to be just doing gangbusters. And yet, that's the one that's kind of suffering. What is, what is happening there?
Great question. So safer money, typically cash investors, local governments, that invest operating funds in sort of one, one in ninety days, one in, one in a year, matured. Rates are high, you can earn higher cash. But this portfolio, again, there are maturities that go on for thirty years. And there's corporate as well as treasuries. Corporates are doing fine. Actually, they're performing, taking a little risk is actually helping with the yield. So you have to remember, twenty twenty-two was the worst year on record for bonds. Bond investors decimated, double-digit negative returns for supposedly safer investors. But because you have longer maturities, you're exposed to them. And so it's going to take a while for the yields to catch up to the, the fair market value adjustment. So bond values went down as the yields are going up. So we're capturing more yield as we reinvest. So we're capturing more yield as we reinvest, but you're still got on the books those losses. But as the as the bonds mature, you get full par value.
It's a paper loss.
So it's a paper loss, essentially.
Yes, because we're holding it to maturity, so really the loss doesn't actually, yeah.
For the most part. I I will, I I'm not, I, this is a question for Dave. He's a little more in tune with this one. But we we are, our trading desk may try to capture value. So I'm not sure if we're holding one hundred percent to.
I'm sure.
I'll double check on that.
It would be good to know that because I mean, because it is kind of unjustly fictitious.
Right.
Loss. I will email that answer to.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Miss Coleman.
Okay.
Have to double check on it.
Any other questions? Do Kelly, do you wanna do anything else or do you wanna take more questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, you're done.
More song and dance. I'm happy to answer.
Are there other questions for Kelly before we finish this? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. You can tell Dave we missed him too early.
He missed you too. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be with you.
Thank you. So the next thing is, Samantha, I think you or Aaron's responsible for putting the history of our 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 ordinance and the history of the raises that we've given to our retirees. And so we're going to have a little discussion about whether we want to increase the benefits, which we've done, as you can see on, I guess, pages seven and eight reflect what we did last few years. In that we've had, we felt, I think I can generally say, we felt comfortable in giving our retirees pay raises. And we see in, let's move down to where we started our, in two thousand fourteen. We did the one-time supplement, which we decided was not a good idea because it, you can probably explain it better than I. Bumped people too far up who were getting social security.
Yes, it affected them negatively overall.
It affected them negatively. And so then we went to, you can see at the bottom of page eight, we went to some percentage of the base increases. We did a four percent in twenty, we did a four percent in twenty-two. We did a five percentage, which kicked in this past January. And so I'll entertain any discussion on this. Because I'm just curious, what would you handle? Like, what's the safe move?
As I recall, when we looked at five percent last year, the increase was nominal based on the number of surviving members that we had. And actually, last year was the first year that we had the conversation that kind of correlated any analysis of this with the current city employees paid. And so the five percent was actually associated with the increase that we did for our non-sworn city employees last year. So that's where that came from. So I think financially speaking, we can more than handle it.
Sure.
And and that was part of the discussion last year.
And and a couple of things, if we do decide to give an increase, it will kick in January first, November twenty-four. And, you know, I mean, I go back to this page four where our annuities are just going down, down, down. So. We're not, we're not required.
Yeah.
But we have the options.
Do you recall, do you see how much the five percent reflected?
I was, I was gonna look through my email, but that's a big long list.
It was very small.
It wasn't a lot. And I can tell you that we have twenty-nine retirees right now. Eight or twenty-nine total in the.
Twenty-nine total?
Yes, we have eight retirees and twenty-one widows.
And just for a comparison, I mean, the two thousand twenty-three COLA for social security was eight point seven percent.
I'm sorry, thank you.
The COLA for social security for two thousand twenty-three was eight point seven percent. Because two thousand twenty-three was a rougher year. My guess is, I don't know if there's any guesses for for social security COLA yet, but it's usually based on the inflation rate. So I don't think they, they think it's gonna be, according to the internet, about three percent. About three, yeah. But we, I would be in favor of a five because I actually think we probably, it would have been better last year to kind of, I think it's good to try to match the social security COLA. It seems fair. We were funded. And that would just be mine. And I don't know if that crosses a boundary by, I don't know how it affects, if it just affects these people or if there's a, if there's a disheartening in another pool of retirees that we have either fire or pension or whatever.
Well, and the, you know, what I always go back and think about is, so these are people who were on the old.
Right.
City pension and when they retired, their pensions in today's dollars were very.
Yeah.
Which is just one more piece of the whole.
I'd be in favor of the of the five percent. And just so we understand the complete picture, do we pay for their full medical? Like, do we, do they, are they all, did they all, because there's some that we're paying medical line, it looks like. So are we, but there should be all on Medicare, right?
That's a really good question, and I actually don't know the answer to that. Do you know, stop here.
The majority do not have health insurance with them. They've opted out because when they retired back in the day, they got another job. So in a sense, we do have some. We have probably four or five that are on Medicare and we probably have maybe eight on regular traditional plans that we have. Some of them may not qualify for Medicare, which is an issue. They are in that order.
Oh, okay.
Yes, what did you say, I was.
Some don't qualify for Medicare because they don't have enough quarters in. They have got forty quarters in. And depending back in the day, whether social security is taken out of their pay. So some don't qualify for it. But they do get a benefit allowance, they're on a traditional, another city plan, they get a, they get a benefit. So you do pop it back.
Yeah, I saw the number there.
And that's for the eight retirees.
Yeah, most of the widows don't have health insurance.
Any other discussion or motion or?
Director Walters was just reminding me that actually last year, because we had this conversation around the same time. Last year, we did an additional three percent for employees in January. So that would have bought from that. And then would have had the five percent this year. Since they're running off cycle, there also could be an argument for a higher than the five percent.
And we did, if I remember, we did that because that's what we did. We bumped our other employees up another three percent.
Did I?
Then in January.
Three percent in January, five percent in March.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that we should go higher than five percent? We should consider it?
I I was just putting out there that, based on the conversation last year, trying to correlate it to our existing employees.
Yeah.
I had completely dropped about them.
We gave them three.
So if we were gonna kind of.
It's justified.
Stick with that thought. And it also actually addresses your, we missed the eight percent last year.
We did miss it, yeah. But I wasn't here, so.
I mean, there's no related repercussions as far as social security benefits and all that kind of stuff. We did, I think eight.
I think it was the one time.
It was the one.
The supplement, yeah.
And this for automatically gives a three percent every year.
Yeah, see, they, yeah.
They do get a call of three percent every year.
Oh, so this is not.
It's per ordinance.
This is on top of that. So if we did five.
If we did five, it would be eight.
Okay.
Yeah, that, the ordinance.
That's why we did five last year.
Where is that ordinance from? Well, that was just.
So if the estimate of COLA this year is somewhere around three or four percent, five percent would be even, would be generous. Okay.
Yeah. Any other, anything else we've missed on this that anybody remembers? Any other comments? I'll make a motion to increase from five percent to the base pay. Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Second, thank you. Any further discussion on this? I'll just say, from my perspective, is the right thing to do. And so there's nothing else. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. And now I will, and that will kick in January first or whatever that goes. After January first.
Does that, does that have to go to the council?
It will.
It will. It'll be an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, yeah.
Okay, that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there anything for the good of the whole? I'll I'll say one thing. I'll say one thing. I want to thank Roger Wright. This is Roger's last meeting as our attorney. He is retiring. And I'm gonna tell people what you've got. He's not really retiring altogether.
I'm still affiliated with the National Guard, so I'm looking at the consideration right now to work with the National Guard here.
He has served our country for how many years?
Well, I've been in the open service, but I started in the nineties.
Yeah.
I'm kind of affiliated in two thousand eight, but then affiliated in two thousand nine. So right up twenty years.
A long time.
Right.
Yes. And we appreciate your service. If you ever see him come into work, he's carrying his military backpack over his shoulder, right?
More.
Just got all the important stuff. And he has, while he has been in our Department of Law, he has deployed more than once. How many times have, is it two or three?
Two.
Two, where he has been gone for a year and served. And so I, I just want to thank you for all your various kinds of service and wish you well. We'll miss you. Some of us will see you at the police mansion next month, or whatever that is. But thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there is nothing else, all entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. We are adjourned. I mean, we're just gonna do it by consensus, right? Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Kelly.